...board of selectmen meeting for January eighth. It is the twenty-third. All three section of present recording center per making the minutes based upon their tape recorder and the video. Tom administrator is present recording for the town of Dunbar is Mr. Leo Martell. Thank you, Leo. Okay, gentlemen, I have three sets of minutes. Do you want to do the first motion, Don?
Yeah, I make the motion to approve the regular minutes of January sixteenth meeting was amended.
I'll second Bob's motion. Any discussion on those, gentlemen? Not in favor?
Aye.
We have two non-publics. Which will be not sealed, but...
I'll make a motion for the eight twenty-seven P M. non-public meeting minutes of January sixteenth.
Second.
Any discussion on those? All in favor?
Aye. And a motion to approve the eight forty-one P M. non-public minutes, January sixteen, two thousand twenty.
I'll second Bob's motion. Any discussion on those? We're gonna go into non-public time on the same subject, just all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I tell ya, the middleman gets shot, gets no action. Okay, I'm gonna open up a public comment. Just please state your name for the tape recorder. None? No? Okay, or I'm gonna close public comment. Okay, I'm gonna start off with a, uh, do we have donations? Four donations with an amount of nine hundred twenty-five dollars, Lee?
We do.
Okay, then David would be so kind to make their, make their, um, make a motion.
I'll make a motion per RSA thirty-one, colon, ninety-five, dash, B, room number three, paragraph B, to accept four donations total of nine hundred and twenty-five dollars from the fundraising for Reese across Dunbar.
I'll second that. Discussion? I just say, Don, he never sees the maze. Thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Let's know maybe for all town fundraisers.
Comment.
All right.
You don't get if you don't ask.
Next person on the agenda is Margaret. And we have a letter from you, I think.
Uh, you should have a letter from, um...
From Dennis Myers?
Dennis Myers, who is the architect that the committee has identified as the best person to pick up for the next steps in the process. We've spent a year looking at various options for accommodating the code required improvements in order to have access to the second floor, and we've come up with a preferred alternative, and we now need an architect to get some schematics down and make a preliminary auction.
Um, I was very pleased that he's, I am, I was very comfortable with it. I understand your intent. He understands your intent. And so I thought he was very clear in his understanding of what Dunbar wanted in this specific year. And the thing is, just for the record, we had concern early in the year if there was gonna be a conflict, that this has to go through bidding process, and since you're a separate organization away from town money, it'll come under your funds, and we can help facilitate this. But the thing is, there's no reason to put out this application. We already discussed that earlier in the year, so make it legal and go the right way. Thank you, our... So, any other discussion on that, gentlemen?
No, I'm in favor as well. I was at that meeting with Dennis Myers, and he'd already done a substantial amount of work on the building. He knows the building. He knows the infrastructure and the grounds around the building. He knows the architectural elements of the outside of the building, so...
I think because it's a selectmen's building or town building, the selectmen should sign it, is, would that be accurate?
We're actually contracting, so... Okay, I mean, if you wanna put a signature, okay, on it, that's fine, but if you need to sign the...
Yeah, you're the expert. My question is, I just wanna reassure you that Jeff Trepsor was, we were concerned that if we do any of the additional repairs to the roof rafters, which are basically in the process of contracting out, would that interfere with the, um, and the things I understand from Jeff, it was no?
No, no. The architect is really focusing on the required addition to accommodate...
Handicap.
Handicap and toilets.
Okay, so I'm very much assured that, I'm happy with Jeff, but we're going forward just in FYI.
Yeah, that's great.
It's intimate, intimate, impending release of the contract for us.
Great. So I think what Margaret had asked originally was to make sure that the selectmen was in support, so your consensus tonight?
Hundred percent support.
You have support, okay, of the, of these services that are being provided.
Yeah, and the fees look realistic, too, on there, so...
There may be a slight increase. I was talking with Dennis, and he did not include heating and cooling because based in his conversation with you and Clem, he didn't appreciate that that was probably part of this, which it seems to me it needs to be, 'cause that's not part of the maintenance work that you guys are doing, as I understand it.
Uh, we won't be increasing the heating system in the building.
Right.
Although I think there was some talk that the heating system that's existing would take care of both floors of that building that's there now. So you write that additional square footage might well look at something, maybe even which of the issues, or whatever, to heat that, so...
To heat that, okay. I think, I don't know if that's included in this, but what's included here is really looking at the addition.
The major problem.
Not the big, not the big room. Just, so we're all on the same page there.
Yep, good. Hopefully, twenty twenty can be the year of execution.
Well, we'll execute this, and he's ready to go, so we'll get, we'll make some serious progress.
One step at a time. But the thing is, I think, I think the majority of the citizens who visit the library realize that's a wasted space right now. And the thing is, it's so much potential for, you have so many subcommittees, meetings, organizations, which would love to have a little meeting, training, it's a pretty good-sized area to do a lot of stuff.
And as Mike alluded to, sorry, Bob, we have the infrastructure done, the structural drawings done for that roof rafter system. So now that that's gonna get implemented, we are gonna start working on some of the other issues we spoke about on that building. We've taken care of a lot of small issues throughout the town this year with some of that building maintenance money, so we're pretty well caught up everywhere else, and we can maybe try and focus.
We're holding some, say, funding in reserve, because again, we don't know which way the bidding's gonna go. It's always an unknown when you put out the bid.
We kinda missed an opportunity this year where we had monies there to be able to do something, but we didn't have a plan, and the process that you're using allows you to work with a friendly person, for instance, where we would have to put it out to bid. So at least that solves a problem where going forward, at least we can start the plan where we couldn't before.
No, yeah. No, I think by using someone who's really familiar with the building, he's got all the measurements, he's got all the information he needs, you know, with input from the committee about what the committee's thinking, I think he will be able to come up with a plan there economically.
Great. And we just gotta make sure the roof's ready to go.
The roof's, yeah.
Okay, leave it at that. Okay, well, thank you for coming in.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Any last questions or comments?
No.
Just keep up the good work.
Oh, one other thing before we head off. Did you wanna try and discuss that field maintenance program again? I know we brought it up.
Oh, tonight?
Before the meeting, or did you wanna come back in front of us and talk about that once you need to be aboard? What I'm talking about is the field at the top of Gorham Pond, the fog field. We've talked last year about the building, the field maintenance.
Right.
Their budget will run out if they continue to try and maintain the edges of that field, and at one time, the town had paid for that maintenance, and then they had done some logging on the property, and they'd taken over the, the maintenance of that field. But there's no way that they can continue to log that property and pay for that maintenance.
Like that, see what the organization would recommend they board, and the thing is, and what kind of arrangements do we have as far as what's the hand check to do with the town, the relationship?
Okay.
So maybe bring back some information.
We're meeting next week, so, so we can bring this up, and then either Thursday or the following week, we'll come back.
The grass is true, it's gonna be frozen.
That's true, but the budget's gonna be getting solidified.
Yes, understood.
Or handed.
And, and we've all seen the emails about the foundation, and we understand that's not part of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
But we're, I just wanna make sure we have, what we need to have is facts and the relationship between the two organizations, and we'll go from there.
Okay. Yep, we'll talk about that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Good, thanks.
Okay, gentlemen.
Thank you, Margaret. Yes, thank you.
Budgets? Now, we have, we all have a copy of the worksheet?
Yep.
If I can follow on, do you have a copy?
I've got five copies here.
You wanna copy, you can follow along.
The warrants or the budget?
What do you wanna talk about first? We have the budget first, listen.
This is all of the projects? Nice. It says slash, Tom.
Okay, so unfortunately, I did not put page numbers on it when printing last minute, so you guys will have to mark us. So these actuals, the column four, are up to date through this past week's account payable payroll. The under-over column is what's remaining or was spent, and then the requested number five column is what the departments requested during their budget discussion.
Okay.
I think we go to the back page, you can see the totals on... Yeah. So we had two, uh, two million five hundred forty-six originally, and now we're pulling six fifty-nine. Let's take that difference.
Is it one eighty-two?
Increase of one twelve seven...
Yeah, the middle number is a variance.
Oh, okay. That's what's...
Twenty-six, fifty-nine.
Flash, what?
Six nine six. We're just seeing the difference, Bob. Minus two-five. Four six. Hundred and twelve, seven fifty-six.
Yeah, that's what I have.
One twelve, seven fifty-six difference this year over last year, as it stands today with everybody's budgets as presented?
As presented.
That's a four point four percent increase over two thousand nineteen.
We're at four point four still?
Yep.
Okay.
And so...
Now we just go down through each of the lines.
Right, so the difference here would be this minus that, and that's, there's not much left after that.
Well, that's the difference between, that's the budget, here's what they actually spent.
Right, that's how much is going up, that's how much we have to play with. Exactly. But, do you see that?
Yeah.
This is what we did not spend.
Right.
That's how much the budget for this year has proposed, and so there's a delta there. You know, so we have enough to cover it, but we just, there was some scrutiny in the budgets we wanted to give right now.
Right.
Okay.
I think this first section, executive, was all set, right? Anybody remember anything in there that we had to change?
I think you're spot on, Corrigan.
Bob, you remember anything in the executive section?
Uh, I, no, I don't, I don't see, uh, what we have here, where we had last week when we went over.
Yep.
Yep, so I'm gonna say executive is okay. Election went down to town clerk. First line is okay.
Deputy town clerk, we reviewed that, and there was an issue with some of the hours. Your worksheet?
Yeah, I just said, I got it here. An issue for Dave, I wanna play on one issue. Four weeks vacation. Okay, so she's making sixteen point four thirty-two, so she, oh, she's got that for it, maybe she could for it.
Yeah, 'cause she read Justin, then after the...
A bump, I picked up a few, uh...
I wanna say...
Sure.
Congress, you know, swine, swine election. This is really all. This line is thirty, obviously. Fifteen. Oh, yeah, this was revised, see, Michael, I have thirteen now, it's at thirty.
I got the revised one here.
Okay.
Okay, in seconds here.
Yeah. Good.
She had the note, so...
Yeah, she dropped that down, eight four two two, that's quick. Let me see, I'm not sure. You're with us, we're just going through numbers. It's boring, but we gotta do it.
Yeah, so she took the fifteen hundred way out, and the fifteen hundred's over here.
Okay.
Oh, okay, there's a sheet there.
Okay.
This one here. Where it's, she was adding twenty-four hours a week to make it a thirty-six for the deputy clerk, and I couldn't see why, you couldn't just increase that week by eight hours and have the office, it's not open on Friday anyways, so you're playing with four days, have it closed one day, and instead of putting twenty-four hours, put eight hours in that spot and have it open three days.
So what would the total hours come to, Bob?
So that would come in to, for...
She had ninety-six in that line, right?
So twelve would be an additional twelve hours. That would give her three days instead of twenty-four hours. So you're losing thirty-six hours, thirty-six, forty-eight hours over the four weeks.
So you're cutting the ninety-six to forty-eight, is that what you're doing, Bob?
Correct. And where the conference is, just, instead of having the office open that, those two days, again, have it open just the extra, the one extra day, so give her those additional hours.
Okay.
And, and the one where it's just for recertification, it's one day, that off, the office could be closed that day.
Okay, so...
Can I share the revised form that she, the one that you have there, the bottom total is at eight hundred and thirty-two hours?
Let's see, we're at nine ninety-two.
Eight hundred, she's got eight hundred and sixty-two.
She did provide us with a revised sheet during the meeting?
Can we see that one?
That's the one that I got right here.
Those were our notes, though, that's her original, and then she provided us with this one.
I think she did come back with a revised one, you still kinda...
I'll just show you.
I hate to work off the wrong one.
Yep.
What do I have here, too? Let's see, election.
So this is the one I got.
Yep. We're seeing that.
Yeah, we looked at the elections, and the other ones were...
Was there anything we changed on the election, Bob? I remember some discussion on the elections.
I don't know if we changed anything on the election. Oh, there's a second, did we do anything with the...
This is the sheet that she handed us after she left.
Okay.
And then... Sounds like it's more aligned with what you were just talking about.
Yeah, I think it is.
Okay.
Let's just go, twenty-eight hours a week.
So that can be cut to, um...
Just make it twenty... Well, actually, she needs time to go to the bank, though, right?
I'd make, was this, cut it in half, from one twelve to fifty, fifty-six.
Well, she's on vacation for four weeks, we gotta be careful. She's only working her twenty-eight hours for those weeks, and she has four weeks of vacation off.
No, that's twenty-eight hours in addition to her twelve. That's a full forty-hour week for her. She's just gonna be, she's once covered forty hours a week. That's four days of forty, forty hours a week, you don't need a four days, forty hours a week.
No, look, like, this is, oh, it is, so you got fifty-two weeks at twelve hours.
Correct.
Yeah.
So she's already working twelve hours a week, how many additional hours would you want during the week when she's here? And Bob suggested, so twenty-eight and twelve is...
Yeah, 'cause you're not taking four weeks in a row.
Right.
You know, so having the office closed, whether it's closed a day...
Here and there.
We're talking about closing it a day.
So brother, you're at forty-hour week, a full forty-hour week. How many days a week are we open now?
We're open four days a week. We're not open on Friday.
Why would it be?
So that's why I say if you just had her so that she's covering three days, you're only closing the office in one day.
Right, 'cause this brought her to forty hours during a week. How many hours are we open in four days right now on the schedule, do you know?
With the town, with the town clerk, it's forty. For those four days, I guess.
So I think what you're saying, Bob, is for the four weeks of coverage, there's a, a double recording of twelve hours or forty-eight?
No, no, it's fine, but she has a forty hours total, but things, Bob's suggesting that we could get by with thirty-six hours, in fact, we don't need the full four, forty hours in that one week. We could have it for, for three days on a vacation week, we could have it open three, three full days instead of a four days.
Well, you've given her an hour to go to the bank. So if you have twenty-seven hours during the week, it's twenty-seven hours, and you close a day, I, you know, it isn't four weeks in a row that you're closed for a day, it's at one time. By posting it so people know, I mean, you're gonna find somebody that's gonna come in and see it's not open.
Bob, so how many weeks would you wanna cut it for, like, for each week, how many she, now is it forty hours a week, how many weeks?
Well, you, all you, you've given her another, is it eleven hours? So that, no, more than that, so twenty-four, twenty-seven hours a week.
Twenty-seven, okay.
Instead of the forty which she has plugged in.
Okay. So let's go in extra hours, 'cause there are already twelve figured on these anyway, so on the twenty-eight hours...
So you only got fifteen hours.
Fifteen extra hours per week, times four.
That gives her a chance to go to the bank.
At sixty hours, sixty hours.
Sixty hours, yep.
Sixty, I'm happy with that number, sixty additional hours in lieu of one twelve. You see that, David?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we don't cut it too short.
No, the thing is, it's summer, too, I'm not terribly worried, how about that?
So we're looking at almost fifty percent, nine, nine hundred sixty-one eighty for that particular line, reducing that from one point three six.
Sixty.
Eight.
Elections, looks like four elections. It's gonna go to the forty hours, so on election day, it looks like we're keeping the office open on election day, is that right?
That's, we're usually closed.
But she's using her downhand, all right?
That's correct, yep, yep.
So she did talk to us about that, I guess.
Yeah.
What's the miscellaneous forty?
So she's asking ten hours of her election day, ten hours from the day.
Yeah.
Okay.
In the miscellaneous, I can't, you know, I don't know why we're putting those numbers in. You know, I'm looking at this from two perspectives. Number one is, it doesn't, it doesn't make a difference if the office is closed for one day. The other thing is that the girl is more comfortable working the twelve hours, as she's, remember, she talked to her, and she said she's comfortable working just a twelve-hour shift at this time. So, I mean, kinda satisfies.
Miscellaneous, I think, was, um, if she's out...
Illness or anything like that?
For illness, I think, right?
Yeah, but you know, you're managing that time during the month, so you can tell when you do need or don't need help. I mean, I don't know how busy it gets every day of the week. I do know that a lot of times, you see, it's gonna be quite clear by yourself.
I just, I just know that I have heard feedback knowing that they're, you know, being, if this is somewhat full-time, they're not always available, and I've heard those rumblings, too.
Well, can you, can we reduce that number?
You wanna bring it to twenty, Bob?
I, I'd be in favor of twenty. Twenty hours, we're gonna cut that in half, line miscellaneous. Elections, elections are always long days.
That was much lower here originally, too.
It was thirty, it went, it went up, yeah.
Yeah, so a couple of them went up, so...
What about, what about the elections?
She only had one on there originally, and there's really four elections, so I think that's right.
That's a full ten-hour day. The thing is, I like having the deputy there, so we can create, they have training and all that kinda stuff. I think it's worthwhile.
And we wanna have a properly trained backup, so...
Absolutely, that's, that's legitimate hours.
So if we bring that one down to twenty, what was it to?
It'd be three twenty, twenty.
So the new, so I've taken her deputy line, which was the thirteen, three thirty-six ninety-six, which we had as a revised number.
No, I meant just the, the six forty-one twenty, bring that to twenty hours, what was that total?
Three twenty sixty, it's gonna be that for that miscellaneous line, and then the additional coverage is gonna be reduced to sixty hours or nine sixty-one eighty.
Good job.
So the new bottom line total for that line is twelve thousand one eighty-two eighty with those two changes.
Okay, that's good.
I think we looked at that, we can change it.
Yeah, we tried to, when we...
It's all right. And the meals are a pretty insignificant amount of it.
You know, I'm not gonna be a stickler to them, like, but the thing is, why do we have to buy meals for people who are, who are getting paid to work, and we have to buy meals for...
I'm just being, I know, they're getting, what, seven or eight dollars an hour or something, it's not much money.
Okay.
It's something that town, though, we've done.
I know.
If you look at that dollar savings, it's not gonna...
The thing is, I have to admit, meals have gotten better over the time since we've been able to give some input. I have to give kudos to Linda for allowing us to give some input.
Well, and the other thing, too, is a lot of those people don't even take the money for themselves. Either they donate it, or they don't, they don't take it.
Yeah. And the election expenses, again, she had to do the full, the full enchilada, because you can't predict who will and who will not take it, so we have to earn the side of who won't take it. I'm fully cognizant of that. Okay, vital statistics, I had no problem with that.
So if we look, if we look that as a whole, it went up a lot, but it mostly went up because we're having four elections. Because if you look, her deputy town clerk now has a lower rate than she even has her budget the year before.
Yep, correct. Which is good. All right, we move on to financial administration.
You wanna give it a little photo on the bottom?
Uh, yes, you can.
The new...
Yep.
Seventy-seven, one twenty-two.
Yep. Okay, that makes sense. That's good. All right, tax collector, I thought it was pretty straightforward in the presentation. I didn't have any really issues with the tax financial administration.
That's all encompassed.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's only, that's an exchange anyways.
What about the fees and services?
Fees and services, that's where I had proposed a new website, and shifted the funds from the administrative line on the first page to the...
Okay. And the thing is, computer support services, that's, I'm, Lee, I just wanna make sure that, for the record, you're doing hardware, separate warrant.
Correct.
Which will cover some of the other departments, such as the...
There's, there's very little wiggle room in that thirty-one thousand there.
Okay.
It's contractual for...
That's for the...
B M S I.
Correct. Or software support.
Website support, the monthly support, Microsoft Office, a number of different breakdowns.
And the office equipment and repair, Lee?
Office equipment and repair, two twenty-five hundred... Two twenty-five hundred.
Is that computers?
Nope, that's actually for other incidentals, ink, software, I have stamps, stamp machine. Oh, actually, one below it, refrigerator and a microwave are on the list for that. Typically, that's just for other incidentals that might need immediate repair or breakdowns of any sorts. That does cover by department, transfer station.
Okay, and the last thing, I have a question, is how about the printing?
Printing is, that's the annual report.
Did you spend thirty-three ninety-nine last year?
Yep, that's because I have to total, chart, budget the total amount, and then I send out a separate bill to the school for their portion of the town report. That's why it shows it was a little bit less, they ended up contributing about fifteen hundred dollars. And then I have Reeds Cross Dunbarton, that gives a small portion of it. And then the town, Garden Club is another one that contributes to that. So there is a little bit of wiggle room, I can reduce that by five hundred. But that also includes the election ballots, so I have to make sure I include a little extra over and above what was spent.
So you've got four elections this year, just worry about it, just our town election.
Just the town, four hundred dollars for her ballot.
Can you reduce that line by five hundred?
Yep.
Put a five thousand on it?
Yep.
Which is for.
The printing town office.
Printing town office. You think that's proof where we haven't, have we gotten a price yet for printing the town?
I have, he is coming in at about forty-four hundred dollars, then that four hundred for the election ballots. But then the fact that I'll be billing the other.
Departments.
Departments for their portions of it. I could see a reduction around a thousand dollars, so.
I was thinking adding five hundred, no more than five hundred.
Yeah.
Okay.
To me, it might be close.
The new total on here is one sixteen?
One sixteen three oh five.
Three oh five.
So that's one eleven.
Right, that's the only adjustment, right, five hundred dollars? Okay.
It's gonna drop by.
One sixteen three oh five is.
No, 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 we're here one, it's five thousand, oh, five hundred, you're right, three oh five. Trying to nice around. Assessing departments?
That was presented by your assessing board.
Right.
That's lower than it was last year, budget?
Yeah. A lot of, a lot of those items are contract items, we can't really do anything. There's two, that was two thousand dollars less on the.
Yeah, the two first ones are payable, and then the last three are contractual.
I don't think that's low.
Okay, so that's, that's good.
And then legal, I just noticed that in my last notes from last week's meeting, you asked me to move twenty to the BOA, Board of Assessors, and then fifteen, so I will make that adjustment bottom line. It stays the same, so I'll make an adjustment there.
Yeah, you can't do much about that.
Yeah.
No, I just wanted to be accurate to where it was being spent.
Yeah, yeah.
You know how you can tell when it's cold out, right?
Right.
The lawyer has his hands in his own pockets.
Okay, social security, okay, these are all.
Those now.
Yeah, those are all personally related, can't do anything about those.
No. He's even planning on zoning his.
But look, Bob, you can see where the impact's here. We saved a few dollars on the, on those, on this here, thank you. So really, it's, for those who are back.
Yeah, we did, we did get some holiday credits, so even with the increase, there are some reductions on the health insurance, dental. Maybe liability on the next page.
Okay, planning zoning?
Yeah, it's pretty flat.
Yeah, in fact.
Move down by thirty dollars.
Government buildings. Again, that's.
It's pretty flat too, so.
Yeah, but we kept, remember, we kept the two hundred at the top? We kept that because we have a few unknowns, and the fire department is hiring us again. Your building there, chief, it's all your fault.
That's what we're here for.
No, we're keeping it well-funded this year because we wanna fix that building once and for all. And also, just to let you know, we're working on this building just the way there.
Cemeteries was completely flat again.
Outside building.
Like cemetery was completely flat.
Yeah, no problem with that, good. Insurance, no, we have no, we don't say so?
No, we don't much, we agree.
Okay, now we have, now we have, speaking of the chief, we have his department. Okay.
Numbers are reversed, four fifty-eight and four eighty-five.
Can I do something wrong?
Yeah, we gotta reverse the numbers. Chief, you have, you may get a buffer if, you may, if you lose an employee this year due to departure, you may get a window where you get some dollars, so.
You could.
Yeah.
I think we scrutinized this when the chief was in, and I didn't think there was anything left that we, I saw that we could really adjust on here.
You have some changes in pays where people have stepped.
Right, step increases.
So.
It was a well-planned budget, I have always had that in mind. Chief, fire chief, no. This is where we increased a little bit here, because.
And we did that knowingly.
Yeah, absolutely.
So.
What are you getting a raise? Albeit small, but the thing is, we are gonna pay our fire department volunteers more. If you're not, if you didn't hear that.
So I think, I think we kind of worked that over real well while he was in here.
Yeah, he did a very well, very good presentation, so. The biggest line was the administration, the. So it was just the pay line for them. It's more than doubles, so that's, that's an issue.
Well, then looking at the EMT.
EMT, right.
You know, that's what changed the number significantly, so.
And that's just the beginning, I think as this town grows, it's gonna be a challenge for this town.
And everything else, you kept pretty flat, or was it?
Yeah, it's not, it's not a huge deal for having, you know, some kind of service available, immediately available.
Right.
Building departments, the next one. And again, that's a three percent raise coming into play there.
Yeah.
On those employees, I don't see anything huge there. Supplies were flat, so that's pretty well flat, other than the, that's made an increase.
Emergency management, same. This is a highway department now. You know, I have to say, Jeff has, we've given a lot of latitude in his department because we don't know what road is gonna be in, maybe in immediate repair.
Right. Now, we do discuss it several times a year, but it all pretty much depends on how it goes through the winter and what roads he has to.
Now, you encumbered money for which, what did you encumber money for this year?
Extra paving.
Extra paving, which is gonna be done anyways.
Right.
So we hit with extras, again, a lot of times it's in the fall, it was all weather dependent too. So that's good.
And I think, you know, this budget's pretty well flat, other than the increase in percentage of the three percent.
Correct. Will, you're next, you're on, which is next? Let me see, what do we got here? Okay.
I don't see anything in here we can really adjust. We haven't already talked about. The equipment maintenance line is one I could see where we could adjust, but Mr. Bones already talked with us about what he's thinking, and he's gonna come up for additional maintenance this year, so I don't think we should touch that line.
He's already had maintenance issues, already unanticipated, front gate.
So. I for one don't think there's much we can really touch on that part of it. We haven't gone through when we did our preliminary budget discussions. You know, the additional fees down the last bottom four lines are all things that are out of his control, that are pretty much.
He's anticipating if it went up that much, he's one of the boards, has, has his waist on a bolt, correct? And stuff we have down here too.
I actually, just to give you a little insight on that, I was way off in my numbers in what I thought that they actually cost. I had a meeting with Bo the other night, so trying to get some more vendors to bid. The actual cost for that day was real close to thirty thousand dollars for the day. And so our part is a very small piece of it, Bo pays a big piece of it, plus the grant money. Very expensive day.
Okay, we'll leave that department alone then.
Yep.
I don't wanna bring it back up.
Well, actually, I have one question, what we're doing as far as, we've gotta discuss about wages for.
That wages won't be decided until we hear back from the other towns.
Okay.
So, we only heard back from three towns, and it wasn't wide enough to make any proper decisions, so.
You need me to do some, I mean, I'm willing to make some calls whenever I can.
One of the things I was concerned with is your part-time line went from seventy-one to ninety-one.
Exactly.
The thing is, did you have too many hours in, and you only executed fifty-nine last year? So where's the happy medium? That was a little bit on the high side.
One thing we can do, I mean, I can adjust some hours, but yeah, I remember last time, last year I was shorthanded. Then I had a gentleman leave, so we were more hours collected there. So it's really not off as far as.
He explained it pretty well when he came in that day.
But, I mean, I can adjust some hours, or I'm more concerned about their rate.
No, but your estimate was based upon four, one way of twenty-eight?
Thirty-two hours.
Thirty-two and sixteen.
So that's a full four.
Full, full argument, and the thing is, that's how you're staffing now?
Yes, I'm staffing four on some days, five on, five on some.
But it comes to thirty-two hours, I'm looking at thirty-two hours a week, pretty much.
It's a little tough right now with that.
Yeah.
That's why I said there is a little flexibility in that.
But you're moving more tonnage every year anyway, irregardless.
Right, and also in that line, even though I have a subcontract line for trucking, if I can get the gentleman to come in and haul for me, so I don't have to use that subcontractor, and that comes out of that part-time line as well.
Right, then I, I recommend we keep it the way you presented it.
Yeah, because he explained that pretty well, and, you know, his tonnages keep going up, but we're not adding a fifth or a sixth part-time employee to do it either, so.
I'm just trying to utilize the staff that I have and give them some hours, because here's the thing. Yeah, we're working a little slow right now, but when the time comes and people want time off, which they're asking for starting next month.
You can have some people.
I have people to cover it, and don't have to worry. Same here, I take my vacation, I have guys that are ready to go.
We're right with you, so no touching.
Okay.
Okay.
Welfare was almost spot-on even, except for the increase in the three percent.
Correct, that's fine.
Heart and neck was lower.
Didn't we, no, we went to.
Yep.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
It's the category four-five-two-zero is what the DRA notices the recreation. We internally identify old home day as their own budget and memorial day as their own budget, but it's included in the same.
And she broke down the one hundred and two hundred like we asked.
Exactly.
And the one hundred, so that's good.
Place orders with anything else too.
Yep, yep.
Okay, good, so.
And the library came in under budget, so.
They came, I had no issues with the library at all.
So there's only two adjusts, two adjustments on the entire claim, right, Lee?
Yeah.
The B total.
Still gonna be four percent. Instead of four point four five, four point, four point four. Okay, what I like, and I'm just, as we're talking about this, I will talk about the budget that town made, and if there's anything, I'll, I'll look at department squad automation for me. And if there's any unique questions, and we'll do some assignments like we did before.
Yeah, I can agree with you, Bob.
Yeah, I'll look at what we did last year, and that'll be the similar format. And if we complement each other, we'll work out fine, and use a subject matter experts to augment, I don't wanna struggle over here.
I'm complimenting you.
Calm down.
Calm down, okay.
All right, so the new bottom line total is two million six hundred fifty-eight thousand forty-two dollars.
What was the last three digits?
O four two.
O four two, thank you.
That's a difference of one eleven one oh two.
All right, back to the drawing board, we didn't cut enough.
Difference is. Difference is one eleven, one oh two.
One eleven one oh two. And that brings us to a four point three six percent increase, so it's still four point four, all right. It could be rounded.
All right. Any questions? Nope, and did you bring our revenue totals, or we're not worried about that this week?
Um, no changes. I didn't print the report out.
We have three hundred and fifty-six thousand, Lee. Between the two, the revenues.
Last week, we discussed it, and we have, we are going to budget, propose budget, or do you wanna know the excess?
No, I wanna know the excess revenues and.
Okay, that came in at one fifty-five, one fifty-seven, if you're round.
One fifty-five.
One fifty-seven.
One fifty-seven, that's revenues.
Yeah, that's excess.
And then we have the one eighty-two, four ten.
That's, and that's up to date through this week, so.
One eighty-two, four ten. This is revenue.
Okay.
And this, so we're gonna add those two together, Mike.
Correct.
And that comes to three thirty-seven, five sixty-seven.
Three thirty-seven, five six seven.
Plus I need, really, we gotta determine what do we want for the ready date cloud to get this percentage.
Well, she had, I had asked her, we're gonna go up, I said you do a five percent and a six percent.
Okay.
We only did the five percent, because we couldn't determine the formula to get the six percent tally.
We said our tax rate last October, and our current retainage is four point seven six at four hundred seventy-seven, five thirty-one.
To bring it up to five percent, what was the dollar amount? Five percent ready date, um, there'd be an additional twenty-seven thousand or so, Lee?
Correct, five percent would be five oh one, four thirty-six, but that was based on Lon's shares budget.
Which is fine. She's insane.
Yeah, what's the difference between those two numbers?
Oh, between five oh one and four?
Yeah, four seventy-seven. We wanna call it DRA?
Yep.
Five percent DRA.
A difference of twenty-four thousand.
Twenty-four thousand eighty-five dollars. Now, looking at the three thirty-seven, five six seven total, I would like to make a recommendation that the board use to keep the tax increase of the town flat. Take the difference between the new proposed budget and the previous budget, and take that one hundred and eleven, one oh two out of that three hundred and thirty-seven, five six seven, lean to make that
Flat.
A flat increase. And then, take the balance, take, not the balance, but.
This one four oh eight five, and add that to the one hundred and eleven?
Just round it off to twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
I agree with that.
To bring the DRA to five percent. All right?
Yep.
So we'll do twenty-five thousand here.
Yep.
And then, I'd like to take. And then, I'd like to take the balance of that amount of money and return it to the taxpayers.
Twenty-five K, okay.
So you take one-eleven...
Minus that, that paid, actually paid for expenses.
Twenty-five out?
Yep, so we're talking about one-hundred-and-thirty-five.
The balance of the taxpayers.
So you're using the difference, which is one-eleven, one-oh-two?
Right.
Adding to twenty-five thousand, which is the, to bring this up for five percent over last year's budget?
Correct.
That comes to one-thirty-six, one-oh-two.
That leaves about a two-hundred thousand, close to...
Two-hundred-and-one thousand and four-hundred-and-sixty-five, so two-hundred-and-one roughly. Four-sixty-five, and how would you propose to return that to the...
Apply it against taxes.
And in October, you would decide that, because you're gonna have additional revenue?
Four-six...
Four-sixty-five, yep.
Yeah, I think, I think you might wanna wait what happens to the year.
Because there are, we're gonna be discussing warrant articles, that's another
Right, out of the two-hundred...
Tool that you can use to apply towards warrant articles.
That two, out of the two-oh-one, we haven't got warrants yet, there are some warrants which have tax impact, again, all those capital equipment funds.
But again, this, this formula here, paying down this four-point-three-six increase by the one-eleven, one-oh-two, and twenty-five thousand to bring our DRA to five percent.
Right.
And those two figures could be easier to decide to run down.
Right.
And then we'll wait on the remainder of the balance after we receive the warrant articles.
After the warrant articles and wait till October, 'cause you see what's coming in.
Throughout the year.
You know? 'Cause you may be able to apply...
When you say wait till October, we don't have the opportunity to wait till October, we have to do these at town meeting.
That's actually how they prefer, they do it at town meeting, but you can do it both ways. They do say that it's legal to do it both ways, so what we typically do is, what you've done in the past few years, is taken some of this excess revenue and excess surplus of the expenses and applied it to the operating budget to keep that flat.
We do that, okay.
And then leaving the warrants to, on their own merit.
Right.
In the past, they use that surplus that you're, that is two-hundred-and-one thousand dollars, towards the warrant article. So that's a true flat, because if you're looking for a flat operating budget, four-six, what we have this year for municipal is four dollars and sixty cents per thousand.
If we could leave, we could do one of two things, we could leave the warrant article stand on their own
Yep.
And apply that two-hundred-and-one thousand dollars to reduce the taxes, or we could use a portion of it to reduce the taxes.
Correct, any, any combination.
Yeah.
Because right now, if you look at the estimates that I have in here, we're probably looking at, real quick, six...
But I don't wanna wait till October to do that.
No, but...
Twenty, sixty, I have sixty, sixty-two.
We also have the unknown.
Right.
Uh, what?
Seventy-three, so the warrant articles, the way they've been presented to me is, is one, a dollar thirty-one. So, that's not, that gets combined with the municipal budget. So all your warrants and your operating budget.
If I'll figure that, a dollar thirty-one times...
I think I just, oh, for the impact?
Yes.
Per household?
Yes, no, no, just impact to the town.
Two-hundred thousand dollars worth, or...
Oh, for the values?
Yes.
I haven't added those up yet.
I see where you wanna go.
Oh, see, that one's from, okay, so I'm going fourteen.
Anything we leave here, right?
Right.
And don't give it back to the taxpayer in one revenue or another, or one avenue or another. We're gonna have more revenues in October, you don't wait till October to say what we're gonna do with this money. We make decision by town meeting what we're doing with that money.
We can, or we can wait, we have two choices here.
We don't, that could back the taxpayer, we don't either.
It can, or we can wait till October.
It's not like the school, we don't pay any...
No, 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 there's a side.
So the combined warrants...
I wanna pay for the warrants with them.
The warrants come to two-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, and then I broke it down to impact, which is a dollar.
Two-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand?
Two-hundred-and-twenty-four, so take that.
That would eat up the terrible.
Three-one-five, three-five.
That would keep it, if we wanna cover the warrants for them.
Right, but what I'm saying is, let's say we give it back to the, I mean, at the end of the day, this, we're gonna raise the tax rates if all the warrants pass, 'cause we don't have enough money.
Seven-one cent increase on that side.
You see, you see where I'm going with that?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, you don't wait till October, that way you're gonna go to...
Well, the thing is, I...
Well, then you change the warrant articles to save you money from surplus.
Right.
Well, right. Or you give that line item, that amount of money back to the taxpayers, and they vote on the warrant articles, one of the two.
Correct, well, that, that, when you say giving it back to the taxpayers, the only way you can do that is at tax rate setting. And then you discuss it with the DRA, you say we're gonna take another two-hundred thousand out of our surplus, 'cause we feel comfortable with the five percent. We're gonna reduce the tax rate setting at that time, so we may have our impact for our town's budget, I'm telling you that's a...
I'd rather just do it on the warrant articles, go through those first, and then we'll make a decision.
That, that's where I'm leaving, 'cause we...
But these two here, I think are, we're all on the same page.
Absolutely, no, but we're, what we're saying, we're agreeing with the, making our budget flat.
Yeah, and then we'll work on the warrant articles after that.
Let's see, unknown.
I, yeah, I, that's, that's unknown too.
Right, but we can't hold money, wait for that.
No, we already did, we have, we have...
Somewhat.
Somewhat.
That's what the five percent should be for.
No, no, we got more money for the side for that. In advance.
Right.
We voted on the rainy, put it aside, three months ago.
So Dave, you've decided we're gonna use some surplus in twenty-five thousand, so technically, we're looking at two thousand nineteen's total budget. Two million, five forty-six, nine forty, and you subtract our proposed revenues, which is the one million, one forty-one, nine forty-eight. So the true tax burden to the taxpayers is one million, four-oh-four, nine ninety-two. You take that times your assessment, and that will give you the true budget for just the operating budget. By by, three-one-five, three-six-five, three, three, three.
But we agree on this part.
Times.
This is where, we gotta see, we're not saying...
We're looking at four dollars and forty-six cents for the operating budget alone. Today, we're at four dollars and sixty cents, that's because of the warrants that were added on to that.
Last year.
Yep, so...
So once the warrants are, once we review the warrants, then we'll make a decision on the balance of money.
Now, we're assuming that all the warrants are gonna pass, they're not all gonna pass.
That's not true, that's not true. We've had a good turnout, good response.
Yeah, I think that the warrants are fairly simple to share, I think they're most likely passed.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna, we agree with applying some of our surplus towards our budget. We're gonna hold off on the warrants, and we're gonna put that the twenty-five K into our rainy day fund with our emergency reserve.
So that brings us to a full five percent at least, which the DRA, whatever it is.
Right.
Especially for a town with no...
With no, yeah, but actually, 'cause we have no bonds or anything.
We had bonds in just a higher amount, but we don't have that.
So I just wanna clarify for you that I'm gonna be working with that one-eleven thousand dollars. You'll have to keep, and I will make a note of it, that of the surplus that is lapsing here, we're definitely gonna earmark twenty-five thousand towards
For sure, consensus.
The October tax rate setting, and then anything additional, it will be...
No, what, say that again?
Twenty-five thousand is for the...
We don't do anything with it right now.
Right.
I know, but it's for that rainy day fund, we're gonna set it.
All of this is set, is lapsing to the rainy day fund. What you do with it and how you spend it determines the increase.
We're gonna make that determination at the town meeting, when we propose our budget.
Right, but it's only for information only, you can't do anything with the twenty-five thousand. The twenty-five thousand will get applied from the lapsing budget, the excess revenue, at the October tax rate setting. You're just saying you're putting it in the rainy day fund, it is there, it will, if you do nothing, it's going in that rainy day fund. It's what you spend.
Right.
Okay? You can't, you can't say I'm gonna put it in rainy day fund, that's where it's going.
Right.
So there's really no discussion about, but you wanna, your goal is to try, when you set the tax rate, no matter what...
Yeah, you're saying if we don't do anything else, that whole two-hundred-and-one thousand will go in the rainy day fund.
That's right, yeah, yeah.
Okay, but I wanna designate at least that five percent worth of it.
Right, so we'll determine that at tax rate setting.
Pencil in that we're not gonna spend that forty-five K.
Yeah.
Okay, pencil it in that we're not gonna spend the, the dollars we're gonna put, apply towards the budget.
Right, so even if you earmark, we're spending one-eleven, one-oh-two
Right.
Of that three-hundred-and-thirty-seven, you wanna set aside twenty-five, that still leaves you with two-hundred...
Oh, two-hundred-and-one thousand.
Two-hundred-and-one, four-sixty-five.
Right, but we have to go through warrants for next.
Correct.
And the thing is, warrants will stand, either stand by themselves, or we can apply some dollars towards them.
Yep.
And like you, I said, we can still keep a little bit of money in that rainy day fund for any of that other stuff that might come out.
We're gonna have, have some unanticipated revenues coming in during the year.
Yep.
Hopefully.
But that amount may not be enough.
Right. I'm agreeing with that.
Okay, that may not be enough, buddy.
Right.
Okay, all right, can we move on to the next chapter?
All right. Warrants?
Yeah, you've got it.
Okay.
Well, that was bad, we're already on.
All right, so I've updated my town warrant that I utilized as a template from last year. Uh, this year, the planning board has one, two, three, four, five, six zoning amendments that they want proposed. They do have to be listed on the warrant, but it's noted that it's by official ballot, so we'll go at town meeting, we'll, we'll bypass one through seven and go right into Article eight, which I will then update with the changes we've made today.
You know, I don't have a copy in front of me.
Is there any copy there?
Yeah, it's in your packet with your...
Yeah, it was in your packet with all these, Mike.
Yeah.
Underneath your budget.
Well, I mixed up some of my notes a little more.
Oh, Michael.
Hi, Taya. Too many papers. Oh. Give me another copy, it's good, you're so kind.
We have extra ones up there on the table, don't we?
Yeah, all the back-to-back, please, that's...
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanna be able to follow along.
All right, just for your information, it's always been helpful to, in the footer, which will go away with the official posting, put the property tax assessment there and give you the formula that I use to calculate the tax impact. Makes it easy, it's transparent, I think everyone enjoys knowing that that's how we come up with our tax reimpact. So we can bypass one through seven, go right on to page two, number eight, which is your operating budget, which we just discussed. I will complete that and with the numbers that you discussed this evening, go on to Article nine, and that would be the standard, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fourteen thousand to be added to the capital, a revaluation capital reserve fund previously established for this purpose, and is summarized in the capital improvement plan. Any changes?
I gotta be educated on the capital reserve fund again.
No, less?
No, I, I, capital equipment plan, but I, I, I can do that offline.
That's the standard
I agree, I agree.
For future revaluations of the town. Move on, yes?
Yes.
Okay, Article ten, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of up to fifty thousand for the purpose of a statistical property revaluation and authorize a withdrawal of said funds to come from any evaluation capital reserve fund created for this purpose, no amount to come from taxes. And it's written that way because they did put it out to bid for the, for the revale itself, and then you have to include the revale for the utilities in his. He's asked to budget with twenty thousand, up to twenty thousand, so that covers both.
For utilities?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, number eleven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing new computer equipment and installation. This article will be non-lapsing for our SA three-two-seven and will not lapse until the town computer equipment has been installed and completed for December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, whichever comes first. Now, I'm again asking the board for funding for the computers. We have Microsoft Windows seven, which is at the end of its life. We have nine computers within my office, two on the outside, and then there's additional software support that the police department will need for their computers. Uh, this is funded and it's worked well in the past.
The date is too far out, I think you can cut that to three years.
No, the DRA doesn't want you to do that.
You have to have five years.
If you're gonna do that, do it for the max, and that's what that RSA allows you.
Okay.
Why twenty thousand?
Um, we have the server, which expires in two years, and that's a five-thousand-dollar purchase that does not include the, um, the technical install of all the, the software, and then your hard drives and everything else that have to come up, so it's quite expensive.
Do we have to do it all this year on this warrant article?
Well, it, it just makes it easier to get into a, a scheduling plan where I don't have to worry about replacing one computer, then having another computer die without the support, and then trying to shift the purchase of one computer to another department because that one died before your other scheduled one, it's worked out very well from...
You know, they just extended Windows seven, right?
Sixty-five dollars a, a computer, yes, I know that.
They changed it, though.
So it's giving us another year.
Now, I keep getting these messages.
I say, I'm getting them too. I'm still getting notices.
Beware which ones you open, though.
Yeah, don't open them.
Don't touch them.
Just, just in support of what Lee's trying to do here, in an ideal world, you, you don't replace them all at once, you replace a few every year, so you kinda, kinda take that, that cost and you kinda spread over a long period of time, instead of taking it all in one year, so I think what she's trying to do will accomplish that.
Well, what she's trying to do is take it all in one way.
She's trying to fund it all in one year, and then do, do the changes, and down the road, you won't have to do this again. You can do much smaller numbers to be able to fund that.
That never works out.
I agree with Dave, but I agree with you, staggering is good.
Thing doesn't work again, we'll be buying all new ones.
Staggering is good.
Because you can technically reduce that, but then again, what happens is, there's always the unknown, I mean, I was underneath the town, the tax collector's computer at least twice in the last three weeks, on my knees, trying to get her computer to work, to the point where tech support came into the building to repl, repair a drive that died. And when you say I'm gonna schedule two computers in one year, and then you find that a third one died, but the one you wanted scheduled can't get replaced now because you've used the money to fix another one, this gives us an opportunity to shift, I know Woody has problems with...
And you didn't put any money in your budget to do any of those computer changes?
Nope.
Okay. Okay. I, I have no problem with that, I just was concerned about the date, I just thought, I mean, we're gonna, that twenty thousand dollars is not gonna last to twenty twenty-five.
No, absolutely not, but the point is that if it does, if you don't need to spend it, you don't wanna rush and spend it, just because.
Just because, I agree.
You need to have it there for what you need it for.
Okay.
All right, next page, four, Article twelve. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifteen thousand for the purpose of purchasing a used backhoe and to authorize a withdrawal of said funds to come from the transfer station vehicle or equipment capital reserve fund created for this purpose. No amount to come from taxes.
Woody, that's a new one.
This is something Woody talked to me about, and the way you, you explained it on the email, you can't do it that way.
Oh, you can, okay.
You need to withdraw from the capital reserve.
Yeah.
Um, because, for example, if, what, what he had proposed was, what he was proposing is the typical twenty thousand that he would ask for. He wants to spend it and then put five in a capital reserve, five thousand. So you either have to say fifteen thousand to withdraw, 'cause you can't, or fifteen thousand to raise and appropriate, and you need to keep that separate from the deposit, 'cause if one fails, the other fails.
Wait, you know, you wanna reverse it? Put number thirteen ahead of twelve?
Excuse me, what are we, what are we doing with this?
So, here's a couple things I just wanna throw out to you. One, I'm trying to come up with a way to decrease my hauls with the truck and increase my weights, which we can't do what we're doing right now. Like, for instance, when I haul a load of steel, I'm getting about three ton in a fifty-I box, I should be in the seven, eight ton.
Too fluffed up?
It's, you have big, I, they have no way to crush them to get them more weight in there. My demo is the same thing, dependent, I mean, obviously I have shingles in there, I get more weight. But when we're hauling straight wood and sheet rock, I can't get anywhere, and you're getting five and six, seven ton on a good day, I should be up more toward the nine, ten ton. The other issue that comes in is when this compactor jams up. I know you're all familiar, I have a lifetime injury from that machine jamming up. I don't wanna see someone else get that injury. You, you gotta dig it out, when it jams, you have to dig it out, it jammed up on... You, you gotta dig it out. When it jams, you have to dig it out. It jammed up on Christmas. Uh, anybody who was down there, there was four and a half feet of trash above the door. In the time, we had to switch the box, we started with an empty box, ran the day, switched it in the middle of the day, and in that amount of time, the box was being switched. There was that much trash that came in, it took us an hour and a half to dig that hopper out so that we could start running trash again in it. Very labor intensive, the chances of somebody getting hurt, uh, are astronomical.
Tell me about backhoe, why fifteen K? What use? Do you have an idea where you might get?
I talked to another town, he has, but he's looking at upgrading his. I mean, it's not something you use forty, forty hours a week. It's an older machine. I wanna go look at it, but I think that's kind of a, you know, a new machine is a lot of money.
Okay.
I'm not asking for a new one. I kinda figured that you could, you know, looking at the internet, looking out what out there, seems to be that you could get something at a reasonable amount, you know, a reasonable.
Does Ken Swayze have a backhoe?
Actually, he does.
We should talk to him, but he's not doing as much work as he used to.
This one, the, the one that this town I talked to, um, he's only upgrading because his highway deposit is a chance of getting a break.
So basically even for, you could use it for glass, too?
Yeah, I just have to be careful because glass is already heavy.
Okay.
It already weigh eighty thousand.
Debris and metals.
Debris, metals, um.
And for extracting, extracting problems.
Extracting problems. You know, sometime it's gonna happen, does it happen this year? I don't know, give it a shot. If not, we'll keep moving. That's kinda like one I was trying to, I didn't know you couldn't do what I'd said in the email was that, uh, twenty thousand, just like Lean said, fifteen for the backhoe, the other five would go to the, uh, fund.
Fund, right.
And if I didn't spend the fifteen, if I only spent ten, the other five would go into the funds well. And then, we wouldn't have to raise the twenty thousand, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
And we wouldn't raise the twenty thousand, but no, I understand what you're saying, that you have to do it this way.
Well, you can change the twenty to five, if that's what.
How much money is in his capital reserve?
We just put twenty in last year and he spent almost everything the year before.
Uh, it's, yeah.
So it had nothing to do with the vehicle, it was equipment?
He bought a truck.
Yeah, that was a big thing.
Right.
I just did the report with the trustee of the trust funds. I'm gonna go get the, uh, December thirty-first ending balance of those accounts.
Bob, do you have any questions on that?
I mean, the other side of the coin is, just don't put anything in the capital reserve this year.
That's what I was thinking.
I mean, that's the other side of the coin.
We just leave that and, well, you normally either reduce it to five or put nothing in it.
How much do you normally put every year?
Twenty.
Why not keep it the same and still, you know?
Because like, if you look at, he just got himself a new truck down there.
Right.
We've done upgrades on the, um, skid steer and the tires down there. If we get this backhoe, he'll be pretty well rounded out, and I'm thinking if we pull that off, we could actually cover most of these warrant articles with the money.
True.
We have.
I mean, I have no problem doing that. I don't, I look at the.
No, we'd be saving twenty, because now he said twenty.
Oh, oh, he's twenty. No, he has got nothing now. He's got nothing in there now.
No, I have twenty in there now.
You have twenty in there now?
Yeah, see the twenty?
Oh, yes.
It's cause remember the pickup was a year out.
Right, that's right.
Yeah, and if you look, he was putting another twenty. What I'm saying is, take this line right off, like, what are you saying?
Just eliminate it for this year.
The second line, yeah.
And just, just with the rights, and come back next year for their, plus not next year.
Come back next year for the full twenty.
Kinda like what we did with the fire department, a few years ago.
Yeah, say again?
Well, if you ask them for fifteen thousand dollars for that backhoe, they might say, why don't you take it out of your capital reserve fund?
He is, he is. If you look at zero.
So you're not asking for any money?
Correct. No, not on that backhoe.
We're, we're asking permission just to use this capital money.
But what we're saying is, don't ask for twenty more to put back in there this year. Wait till next year.
Yeah, you might be right there.
You know, cause we just got the truck upgraded.
Yeah.
He's already upgraded the Mack truck the year before that.
Now I understand, I thought you weren't gonna ask for any money just for the backhoe, and I was like, I don't know about that.
Yeah, I'd say this is a good twenty K this year.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So it's not, the Chesapeake is around. I, I think we get consensus, Bob, you're pretty good on that?
Yeah, that's right. We did that with the fire department, we had them cut those for a year and a half, for a year, you know? So.
And I think the fifteen that he's looking for, you can get a pretty decent machine.
I think he, you know, he's gonna take a little time to look around.
A tired backhoe, right?
Not, not wore out, but.
Right, no, but a tired one.
Yeah, an older one.
I meant rubber tired.
Yeah, right, right. I thought you were saying tired.
Not that tired.
Have a holiday for you.
That's a good one, Woody.
I didn't see what he was saying.
I was saying a rubber tired one, and he says, not that tired.
I thought he was talking tired.
Okay, I think we have consensus here from the board.
Lean's going to get that.
Eliminate the fourteen. No, yeah, eliminate the fourteen. Woody, it would be so kind just to talk to, go down, tell Lean that cease and desist.
Just put it on the way.
Oh, jeez. Cease and desist.
You're on the planning board too long.
Lean, you can put that away.
Mike, cease and desist.
We're good.
What?
We're gonna eliminate thirteen for this year.
Oh, okay, cause I was gonna say, you could say up to fifteen, so if he only spends ten, he's only taking out twenty, ten.
Yeah, we're gonna say up to fifteen on number twelve, but I think it's, he's only, we eliminate thirteen for this year.
Okay.
I actually think that it would be easier to pass one next year telling them, you only have five thousand in your capital reserve.
Yeah, cause right now he has twenty-two thousand and fifty dollars.
And you come back, we didn't ask it for the previous year because we had new vehicles, but we now start thinking for the future again.
So can I write it so that, and I realize I didn't do it here, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of up to fifteen? So whatever, you only take out what you need.
Right, that's perfect. Okay, we're at fourteen now.
Yeah, cause if you know we're that perfect, you know we're gonna get caught.
So we're gonna remove thirteen?
Yep.
Um, next one is, uh, standard, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty thousand to be added to the fire department emergency vehicle capital reserve fund previously established and is a.
What I don't wanna see is, uh, town meaning heroes, oh, I wanna cut that to twenty-five thousand.
But no, nobody found that.
You can't control that, and it shouldn't come from internal, um, but unfortunately you have people.
But we haven't really seen that on these.
Okay.
Not on the fire department, anyways.
Nope.
You know, when John told us the cost of a fire department vehicle, we're talking about plus two hundred thousand.
Oh, no.
Beyond that.
Beyond that, yeah, beyond two hundred thousand.
Yeah, actually, I think you're looking more in the five to six hundred thousand.
Yeah, I mean, it's not cheap firefighting equipment.
Right now, they only have two hundred and twenty-eight, seven eighty-one, so please will give them another portion.
Okay, no change in that.
No change, okay.
So now the police vehicle.
Oh.
You have a total dollar on that, don't you?
I don't have that yet.
Can, can we give you a, uh, I think we're gonna hand off a little early to kinda, so you can see what numbers we came up with.
Yeah, we're gonna need to see it. Or we're gonna put a line through it. I don't think it's too early.
Mike's fun to determine if we have that old, um, transfer, transfer station truck.
Hey, I don't know why you don't.
Thing is, it's now for sale, with starting prices, three thousand. It's a mighty budget transfer.
Only driven on Sundays by a little.
Woody, save me a couple of milk crates, so we have a seat.
Absolutely. In fact, in fact, I'd be willing to, to, to throw in a hundred dollars for a used seat.
Good question. We're talking about the dogs again, the poor dogs in this town.
And now, and now we have to, we see cruiser request warrant, we'll, we'll get after that, but third of the way down is this cruiser request warrant.
Yeah, got it.
If you skip down to, under the mileages, there's a breakdown on the vehicle, and it, it's kinda ball packed right now, but, uh.
How about just the vehicle total?
Fifty-three thousand is what I'm saying, right?
The vehicle, the vehicle itself, thirty-two five.
Oh.
That's with the outfit and all the equipment.
No, no, no.
So fifty-four, yeah.
Fifty-three, you need to include everything.
Well, it's in there.
Why are there question marks on the sum of line fifteen then, is what I'm wondering?
No, no, excuse me?
On, on the warrant.
I didn't have a number, he's working on that, so he's telling me.
Why is there fifty-three down lower?
That's what he has in his special revenue funds.
In his competition, he's had that, he's had that now.
And it's exactly equal to that right now?
That's correct.
Just by steel, I, I got these numbers today.
I know, I, I know that, uh.
No, I didn't give her any numbers, I, I.
No.
There's a, there's a new board here, you cannot tell us this.
The, the treasurer does not like to deplete your, your account completely, cause then it makes it difficult for her to keep it open.
No, they should, should take a sizable chunk of that out of there. I don't know if I'd use it all, because next year, um, we're gonna repeat the tours, cause I'm gonna, gonna be lucky to get a, uh, get an inspection out of it, yeah, I've already, I've got holes in the rocker panels and stuff, so it's, it's, it's raw.
Oh, so the question marks are for what you want put in that, in there.
How much is in there?
Fifty-two.
Only fifty-two.
But we don't wanna zero it out.
But we don't wanna zero it out.
Okay.
So take fifty grand out.
Could you, uh, could you?
Would you be happy to take forty?
Taxpayers gotta know that this is coming from special details.
Right.
So as we fund special details, the town gets a benefit out of it. And so it's like, money, it's not from taxpayers.
Well, the, only, only what you decide you wanna use from taxpaying money to buy it, isn't it?
Right, right, that's be the delta.
The lion's share of it could come out of there.
It's being paid by what you guys do in the exit.
This year, we raised, uh, twenty-one thousand dollars this year in, in special duty funds for that.
Now, keep that thought in your head, if we took forty out of the fifty-two, you'd have approximately twelve plus an additional twenty-one next year.
If we do this, if we do the same numbers, we actually, we, we were short, we were actually short vehicles this year. We ended up using host community vehicles, um, for some of our details, cause we didn't, we didn't, oh, we didn't have enough cars. So if, if we had another vehicle, which I'm gonna ask you, so.
This would have been.
We would have been able to boost that a little more, we would, cause we did, um, twenty-six thousand just in administrative search objects this year.
So would.
We made more in administrative search items than we did vehicle usage this year.
So my question is, forty, would forty be?
And then that would be a four cent impact, thirteen thousand would be four cents.
Whatever you, that's up to you, how much of it you wanna use. All, all we're suggesting is to leave something for next year, so there'll be some money to replace it.
That's what I was thinking, forty would be kind of a round number, still leave a good chunk in there and do something with next year and all the vehicle.
Yeah, that's probably a good number.
Okay, well, the tourist knew when you received it?
Yeah, back in, uh, some thousand.
So we'll make that forty thousand later.
The top line will read fifty-three thousand. The fifty-two, six eighty-eight will be forty thousand.
Up to fifty-three thousand? Or?
I think, well, they, they, they.
Do we have to put your exact number in there?
No, they don't, if it comes in less, he only withdraws less.
Yeah, I, these are very, very raw numbers. I've, I've had some trouble getting, um, quotes on some of the outfits.
Right, but didn't we get in trouble wording that wrong last time, see the town voted for the sum of, up to the sum of fifty-three thousand?
Well, I think if you give a total amount and he has budgeted a little bit of extra and can, can get a better deal, he would only be authorized to withdraw what it costs to pay the bill. If it's invoice.
That's why you have to word that up to, don't you?
Up to, because, because the problem is, you, you only gotta set them up from taxes, and that's it.
Yeah, well, you should put up to, don't you think, like we did on the other one?
It's up to you.
The sum of.
See, this, see with Woody, he doesn't know how much it's gonna cost, but he wants, he knows he's got an estimated figure, whereas.
What the chief is saying too is he doesn't really know the hard number until he actually puts a price.
This is, this is kinda a rough number?
Right, so if we, up to fifty-three thousand, then you could determine where you're gonna get the amount.
God, I hope it doesn't cost any more than that, yeah. I, I think up to would be enough.
All right, let's do up to.
Okay, and then the withdrawal is forty thousand, and then the thirteen thousand will be coming from taxes with an impact of four cents. You see how I did that?
So instead of the fifty-two, six, six, eight, you want forty thousand there?
That's what's gonna be there, to withdraw forty thousand from the police special detail revolving fund, and then the remaining thirteen thousand come from taxes.
Have you thought about a brand, I'm sure, at curiosity?
About what?
Brand?
Yeah, four, four, it's the same as what we have now.
I think they're the cheapest ones.
Yeah, and actually, it's the cheapest of the ones that are off, there's three different models of it, and, um, this is the, the least expensive of them.
Okay, with the Econo Boost engine?
No.
But that fifty-three.
The Econo Boost was an extra about four grand.
Really?
The fifty-three is all equipped.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, cause the vehicle itself was much cheaper, it was only two, thirty-two.
Yeah, the vehicle was, uh, thirty-two five.
Is that, is that, is that a state contract or?
It's on, it's on the state contract, and there were, there were a couple of things that we had to add to the base price of the vehicle, so I'm up to about thirty-two five, and some of the things I got might offset what we might pay for an outfit, so there's, there's some juggling, because you can't really get an apples to apples read from the outfits there.
I don't think so, if we put up to, it would be perfect.
Yeah.
We don't need a C D and a satellite radio, thirteen thousand and four cents?
Four cents, correct.
No, no, I know, we, we, we don't, uh, we don't actually need anything, just love that.
No, serious radios not needed, correct, yeah.
Okay, uh, Article sixteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty thousand to be added to the highway vehicle capital reserve fund previously established for this purpose and is summarized in the capital improvement.
That's standard, isn't it?
Ten cent impact, yep. Article seventeen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of a hundred thousand dollars for additional costs associated with paving.
I have no discussion there.
Estimated taxes of twenty twenty, thirty-two cents. Article eighteen, to see if the town will vote to establish an energy capital reserve fund for the purpose of purchasing a solar array and to raise and appropriate the sum of six thousand dollars to be placed in this fund. Said fund to come from unassigned fund balance, no amount to come from taxes. Mike and I discussed this earlier.
I wanted to start a fund, uh, to, to at least put some money aside, uh, out of our surplus for the solar array purchase, so.
So that's where you need to purchase, you can have the money aside.
Or at least, at least half of it, so it don't affect the taxpayers' bank. Dave, what do you think of that?
I only, uh, I only refrain, refrain from doing anything on that until we see how the revenues are over a year, which Bob was a big advocate of when we first put them in, and without knowing if we're gonna be on the positive side, cause they're gonna be able to give us, you know, I know we're gonna pay the flat fee until we purchase it, but they're gonna be able to give us what that's generating, so we would know it.
And they're actually gonna be able to put it so it's visual at the transfer station, I believe.
I do, I do like your idea, Mike, because I think that that would do it, but I think maybe next year might be the year to do it only for the simple fact.
Probably an easier selling point.
That we can say, listen, this is what it looks like it's generating, and we might need this X amount of money to help with the purchase if that grant doesn't go through the thirty-six thousand.
Well, I, I just wanna be prepared to answer.
Especially those that are familiar with the solar array and what it produces, now, they already are looking at that, you know, how much it's generating.
I agree with you.
Okay, I think next year would be.
Okay.
So wanna wait, hold on?
Defer one year.
Defer one year.
I'll, I'll get a consensus.
Now, uh, before we get too far, I wanted to point something out to the chief and Chris. If you look at, um, how the fire department's doing theirs and how Woody's done his, and how the highway vehicle is done, and then you look at, you guys have a vehicle, and you come every two years or whatever, and the amount kinda fluctuates, cause the vehicles fluctuate a little bit. If you guys could do a graph out of the vehicles you currently have and when you bought them and all that.
Yeah, we have that.
You might be able to look at a fixed amount that's on this every year as a warrant article that covers you, but gives you enough to do a vehicle every other year or something to that effect, or every two years, with it being more of a, just like a standard layout, which the townspeople accept, and it's nothing you have to even almost speak to. You know how like Jeff goes up for the, in the fire equipment fund, everybody's used to it, they don't need to really talk a lot about that forty thousand dollars, cause their vehicle's gonna cost four hundred thousand dollars, you know what I mean?
So. But the, but they, they have a uh income revenue stream coming from special detail, which is different.
That's right. Their, theirs is completely different.
They do, but if they look at that revenue stream.
It varies from year to year.
Well, it does, and but it all depends on on how many people we have working and what we have of vehicle availability.
Yeah.
Um, I think we had.
But I'm just saying, if you had a capital reserve fund, like, let's say, like we're doing forty thousand.
Yes, I, I, I agree, I'd like to do that.
If you did twenty thousand a year, plus what you're getting on this detail, you might be okay to get a new vehicle every other year or every two years without making it a big ordeal coming to the board or anybody else, cause you have that reserve fund, just like every other department does, for their equipment.
So you'd have to create a capital reserve fund.
Yeah.
Reserve fund.
I I think that, I think that would be a good, good idea, I think we talked about that with prior boards who didn't wanna go forward with that. But um if we did something with that, every year we could fund it with whatever the money, amount we have in the um, the vehicle fund, we could transfer that money into the capital reserve fund.
Well, why don't we look at creating that capital reserve fund for you?
I think that'd be a good idea.
I agree.
And that way, it's, you're like every other department, it's not a big deal.
That special duty fund though was created under a certain RSA, so that would, you'd have to be careful, it would be too.
I don't want this to to touch that money at all.
Right.
Okay, so this, that money's above and beyond.
You can't come in.
So, in other words, they might get a new vehicle with their capital reserve fund, and they might outfit the vehicle with that other money.
Right.
Okay?
They may even offset the cost.
You follow me, you might outfit the vehicle with those additional expenses.
You know, we're, we're paying thirteen thousand from taxpayers' dollars.
Yeah.
Rather than coming to the voters, you'd have like, say you only put five thousand towards it every year, over the time, that, or five or ten thousand, you'd have the money.
I agree with you, I think it's a good idea, I think we discussed it in the past with a different board that that uh didn't wanna do that, but I, yeah, I I think it's a, it's a really good idea to do that.
Now, I know, it'll take you a little while to project your vehicles and the number you wanna come to,
We can project that vehicles. Yeah.
But if it's an even amount, the taxpayers get used to seeing.
Yeah.
Okay, we know the police department's here for their twenty or eighteen thousand a year or whatever.
And you, you guys need vehicles more than anyone, you beat them up.
Well, we, we can project, we just went two years without getting a vehicle, so now we're in a vehicle cycle, we're gonna need to get vehicles probably uh for the next couple, three years.
With that, with that, I would just, this is the time to start doing it.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea to do that.
And now, do you have time to do that this year on this, or is this too tight?
It will do whatever you want me to do. If you want me to add another capital reserve fund, create one, put it on the warrant article.
What do you wanna fund it with first, first, you wanna fund it with?
It's gonna have to be with taxes, you can't take the surplus, you can't take his money.
But I. No, what about our circles?
Oh, you?
We could put five thousand in the seed money in there.
No, but why don't we just make it, start a capital reserve fund, even with a thousand dollars to start.
Yeah. Establish?
Establish.
That's what, that's what I'm saying.
I wanna establish it, next year, you have time to put your dollars aside and say, okay, we wanna do twenty thousand a year, eighteen or.
If you, if we're not, we're in a vehicle cycle, so we, next year we're gonna need another vehicle.
Can that be funded with our circles? Be funded with uh.
So I don't know how that's gonna impact there.
Well, that's what you have to, you have to kinda iron that out.
Yeah.
Because a portion of it might just cover your vehicle, and like you said, this other fund you have might equip that vehicle. So look into a lot, you're, you're getting about twenty grand a year, it looks like with your.
Yeah, it it all depends on how much work we get, and all that work, the bulk of it's out of town.
I mean, you're gonna be going to St. A's pretty quick.
Yeah, looks that way. They don't take vehicles over there, they don't need the vehicles.
They don't, okay.
All right, so create or establish a capital reserve for.
Police, police vehicle replacement.
Uh, do a capital reserve fund for.
All right, I was gonna, I guess it should be called police vehicle and equipment.
Well, call it the police department vehicle capital reserve fund, just similar to the fire department.
Yes, I think the wording of the fire department.
Okay.
Mary, the fire department.
Well, I, we'll get them. Fire department is emergency vehicle capital reserve fund, which the police department is emergency vehicle, is what I just called it.
No, just vehicle.
With this vehicle, police department vehicle.
Police department vehicle capital reserve fund.
That's, that's, that's.
Would that limit us from doing the outfits, cause that's equipment and not vehicles?
No.
Yeah.
Why would that, no.
I I don't know.
No.
I don't know.
It's the same as, what do you do?
No, I think he is right, we should say uh vehicle and equipment, because we were caught on another warrant article where we didn't say that, actually, it was on Jeff's truck.
Well, it's because I.
Where we didn't put the equipment part of it in there, and that town meeting, they said, why are you doing this much money?
I I think when you go to expend, um.
Do you remember when we got called out on that?
It might be safer to just do that.
Yeah.
Um, police department.
The other thing is, it doesn't tie your hands to just that vehicle, right?
Capital reserve.
Well, you can word it later, Leon, but I I would do the vehicle and equipment, only so that you have that latitude to juggle.
And equipment. And how much are we gonna put in there, a thousand?
Uh, I was thinking five thousand. Or seed money, maybe one thousand, oh, we can put a thousand.
A thousand, cause we're just starting it.
Yeah.
We have to start it with a dollar amount, right, we're not gonna start it.
You can start with a dollar.
I have to figure out what you're saying, cause you said a thousand.
A thousand, why you would have done this?
Then you jumped to five thousand.
No, he was one thousand there. I see you got fifty thousand in here, is that where you're?
You said a thousand.
You may as well jump right in.
Fifteen cents in the.
And then the money's gonna come from where? Taxes or from surplus?
Surplus, surplus. I was, I was, I was thinking.
Is that the consensus of the word?
It's gonna be the only thousand you get for free.
Yeah.
All right, got it.
Then drop it down to one thousand, this is our surplus.
Yep.
Yeah, I just, I'm reading through these warrant articles, and I'm listening to what we did on years, and we're going on to the next one, like, it makes no sense that the police department doesn't have the same.
You can take the seed money right out of the administrative search charges. This, 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 yeah.
Excellent worst case scenario, we send the next year number in.
I work for peanuts, so you could do that.
And what, I have to feel that, I don't know what's wrong with that.
All right, next, P one. All right, the highway vehicle reserve, that we said, talk about that.
All right, um, where were we?
We're down on Millsoil, right, nineteen.
Nineteen, yeah.
Nineteen, yes. To see the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-two fifty for the Millsoil Control Grant Agorn Pond and to authorize the selectmen to accept a grant from the state of New Hampshire D, has an amount of forty, four thou, oh, is that right?
I think it was, I think it is right, Leon.
No.
It was smaller than that.
No, no, it was less than that, um, I have it there.
Nine hundred, we thought it was.
It was nine hundred, that might've been last year's and I didn't.
Was it nine hundred or nine fifty, Bob?
Um, I got it right here, I got it right here, nine hundred, let me change that to nine hundred.
Somewhere around there.
Cause the bottom line is correct, I just didn't change that one, so that should be nine hundred. Um, and to withdraw a hundred and fifty-five from unassigned fund balance and to withdraw thirteen fifty from the invasive plant species capital reserve fund established for this purpose, no amount to come from taxes. So that was last year's grant money, so it's the total twenty-two fifty, a grant of nine hundred dollars. We had donations from the Goran Pond people, a hundred and fifty-five dollars, and then that leaves uh thirteen fifty to withdraw from the invasive species.
How much is left in that fund?
They have, um.
It's more than a thousand left?
They have fifteen thousand four hundred eighty-eight.
Oh my god, okay, plenty, okay.
Hey, Leon, after the one fifty-five from unassigned fund balance, can you put parentheses there? Donations, so we know it's a select board when we're up there speaking about it.
Mm-hmm.
That we can differentiate the donation from the.
From the surplus?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
Just so we're clear when we're updating, Peter asked us, so we don't hesitate, yeah.
Okay.
What's it, one fifty-five?
All right, and then the last one, uh, this was the housekeeping one that you guys asked me to look into. I did forward this to the DRA, she um has not responded yet, but as you know, that sample of the book that I had for the warrant.
Yeah.
It, this is the language I got from there, so to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to appoint a town welfare director in accordance with RSA forty-one colon two, rather than electing a welfare director. And then that last line is up to you, but this position would follow the guidelines of the Dunbar and personnel plan and be governed by the selectmen. I I don't know how you feel about that, I just.
I like that one.
I think it should, it just basically clarifies for the public that.
It's housekeeping.
It is housekeeping, and then we're just getting it out of the elected, um, and then ma, and documenting that it's an appointed position.
So now that we've xed a few of these, let's go through them and add up the cents and dollars.
All right.
Adrian.
Demanding, let me figure this.
You wanna just do it this week, Leon, come back to us?
No, we can do it now.
No, we can do it now, what else do we have to do? Bye, bye.
We get some, we get some lobby, not public, so I guess we're two.
So the thousand dollar one's gonna be less than half a penny, point zero zero three, so this really won't be any impact. Unless I put zero zero three, so go back to these, and I have five cents. Six cents.
Six.
Fifteen cents. Four cents. Ten cents. Twenty cents. We are looking at seventy cents total for the warrants.
I have two hundred and sixty-seven thousand.
Well, I did the, the tax rate, cause I figured the tax rate amount.
Right, do you have two sixty-seven too? I thought it was lower than that before.
Uh, I calculated the tax rate, so let me do that. See, some of these are coming from surplus and have no impacts, you can't add those, you don't add anything, right?
I didn't add the ones with surplus.
Okay. All right.
How power? Right, I don't think we can, but so, it's gonna be close. I think we're gonna have to slash a couple of them. Chief's gonna drive his vehicle from the head here.
Two hundred and seventeen thousand, is that what you came up with?
I had two sixty-seven for somebody.
Well, you, you can't, all I took for the vehicle is the thirteen thousand.
That's what I did too.
Okay.
So I did fourteen thousand.
Yeah.
Then I did fifty.
All right. There's no tax burden there.
Oh, okay, that was my mistake.
Okay.
So take fifty off mine, should be right.
Two seventeen?
Yeah, cause I had two twenty-four before you made that adjustment, so that would bring it down.
Yeah, two seventeens, perfect.
And then I calculated that to be seventy cents on the tax rate.
Now, if we slash a couple of more of these down, we could be eating about another two hundred. Bring the paving down to eighty.
You have to keep in mind, um, we are in a revow, we have.
Huh? How do you run your housing, do you run it in the negative or you run it in the positive?
What would you like to splash?
No, no, um, how, how much of a tax rate impact, um, after we apply the entire remaining circles to it?
Well, if you take the two seventeen, you have.
We're two oh one, so we're talking about fifteen thousand dollars minimum.
Yeah.
So you're talking uh.
Well, we just spent a thousand for the PD new capital reserve, so we have two hundred thousand four sixty-five for surplus.
Okay.
But I'm just saying, you could, you couldn't even bring the paving to eighty thousand this year and.
You could.
Yeah, that's, I wanna see what you had for paving.
But also, Leon, I was also thinking that we didn't, instead of just touching the paving one.
No, he didn't, no, this is the thing, he didn't tell me how much for paving. That's what the difference.
I wanna say about thirty-five.
Highway paving.
Drop, drop it fifteen thousand.
No, but, no, take the paving, instead of taking twenty off it, take ten off that, but take ten off of his vehicle. Cause he just got a brand new vehicle, and he's asking for forty for his vehicle, is he?
Okay.
Where is he at, here in the vehicle?
Yeah, thirty is the typical deposit on page four, number sixteen.
Well, you're two fifty-two for paving and.
Yeah, so if we brought his vehicle to twenty, Leon.
Yeah.
Follow me here, guys?
Yeah, but the thing is, I.
Bring his vehicle to twenty, he has a brand new truck you just got. And then bring the paving to ninety instead of a hundred.
Because he's got thirty thousand dollars he didn't expend this past year.
That's right, so bring this to ninety.
Okay.
All right, and now.
I can, I can do that.
That takes twenty off that, right, Leon?
Yep.
For two new, total of one ninety-three?
Yeah.
Then you add zero.
And there's a little left to put aside for. If we decide to do that.
Put aside four?
Power lines.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we're looking at sixty-three cents impact instead of seventy.
Right.
And then what I had calculated with, what we made the changes with surplus for the operating budget, four forty-five plus sixty-three cents. Four dollars and fifty-two cents for that. The town, we're currently at four sixty.
Yep, so that would go across.
It would be the warrants and, I just added the warrants and the operating budget.
We did them all already?
Yeah, cause it was, um.
Two fifty cents.
Sixty-three cents for the warrant, four dollars and forty-five five, if we round out, so we're looking at four dollars and fifty-two cents. Oh, did I do that right? One, one second. Four point four five five plus point six three, excuse me, I'm sorry, five dollars and eight, nine cents. Five oh nine fifty, and we're at four sixty.
And that would still, you know, be a pretty big jumpstart on his vehicle.
Forty-nine, forty-nine cent increase.
Like I say, that's it, we're done with the fire department, yeah, John.
Remember, we did that one time, we cut his by about twenty, I think, actually.
We cut, had, had him cut it by twenty, cut it in halves, uh, for that year, and he had no problem.
Yeah.
Well, it used to be sixty.
Oh, did it?
Used to be sixty, we cut him down to forty.
Wow?
Yeah.
And it's been forty years since.
We're almost at zero sum game, with, with use of surplus then? When, we, with.
So you see what we wanna do next week, you can do this kind of cover sheet on it.
Yeah, I'm gonna do that, will I take this spreadsheet, and then I do that, all the warrants and anything else, that at the bottom, so that you can get a true total of what the impact's gonna be.
You okay with everything, Leon?
Yeah, I think so, I'm tired, but yeah, I'll get it.
All right, wanna go to.
Yeah, let's move on. All right, you've got a, I, I, let's go to mailbox very quickly. I have a census here, Leon, I have a, they want verification of the boundaries, who's a boundary expert? I was thinking Fred Mullins.
Yeah, yeah.
Could you ask him if he'd be one?
Did that just come in, cause I didn't see it.
Sure did, I'm gonna pass it to you.
I didn't see it either, much.
It's just a census, uh, they want verification of town bounds.
You, I think we get those annually and.
Who's the person for it, right?
If there's no, um, change, isn't it usually a response that there's no changes, you don't have to?
Well, they, they want a written response from me.
Okay, they'll get, right, do that for me.
Yeah, just if we look at that.
Okay.
Um, we got a, um, concerned citizen about, uh, concern about people disrespecting no trespassing signs. Follow the chief for action, chief, you haven't received my email?
Yeah, that was, um, you're talking about solicitors?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I took a look at that today, I'm still not in favor of uh doing a town ordinance on.
No, I.
For license solicitors.
I, I agree, but if you just look at it, and I think it's a, if you come up with a reasonable response from you, from the, from the law enforcement side, we'd be.
You want, you want me to respond to that?
Please, chief, I, I was talking with Mike earlier about it, and when this person's going out to solicit and there's a no trespassing sign, as soon as he come onto the property, she should've just called one of our departments to.
Yeah.
You know, because at that point, the guy is trespassing, and that would be the correct answer.
Two, two things here, if, if it's on a, um, if it's on a shared private road as opposed to a private driveway.
Yeah.
Now, that is a, uh, uh, the New Hampshire Supreme Court case that, that discusses that being a way. So I'm not sure that, that that is enforceable on that, on a private, on the private road.
Well, walking up to the house is different.
Private driveway, different story, if they're properly signed. You know, they have to be properly signed, then it's a violation. On, on any circumstance, they can always call, send an officer up, speak with the person who came to the door, check them out, tell them they're not wanted there, whatever the, whatever the homeowner would like, those things we can handle.
Yeah, cause I think in reading that, the only response I didn't see is calling the property authorities to check it out at least, you know?